April 12 for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have a full house today, so we are going to follow the agenda. And for those that are maybe new to the process, how this works is we will go through each of the items. There are two spots in the agenda for an open forum. So if you're not on the agenda or speaking to something on the agenda.
If, now it sounds, that works? Perfect. All right. So if you are not on the agenda but would like to speak about an agenda item, we will have a time that will call you up for that. And then if you have a new item to bring up for business, we'll have two separate times where you can come up and speak to that. If you are on the agenda, we'll also call you so you know when you can come up. So the first meeting, or the first item on our meeting is approval of the March 8, 2022 minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
I will be approved as submitted.
Second?
Motion has carried. All right, the item number C, Council Liaison Report. Tom, will you please give us an update?
The city council met last week and the, probably the biggest and the most impactful item that was accomplished was we established the framework for the Breezy Point Pequot Lakes Fire Department. So we will have a joint powers agreement in place that will make both Pequot and Breezy Point basically owners of the fire department. There is a fire board that is being established, which will fill out, essentially fill out the framework and do all the procedures and everything associated with getting that up and running. This is a big step. This gets us some skin in the game as far as being able to control the destiny of the fire department, basically for our own good. So it's, it was a really good thing to get done. It's been in the works for quite a while. The second item was audit presentation from Clifton Larson with the, basically went through the audit that just occurred for last year's financial situation. And the result is we are in really good shape. We're one of the best-run cities in the state. The, then finally, we had a relatively long discussion on the Disc Golf expansion from some residents that wanted to stop it. But of course, it's already under construction, so I mean, it's not going to stop. But they asked a lot of questions and we answered a lot of questions. The Disc course, the Disc Golf course is on schedule to be opened up this summer. So that'll add a second 18-hole course to the Disc Golf course. So, any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, then we will open forum number one. Forum number one is for anyone here in the audience that would like to come up, identify themselves, and speak. Is there anyone that would like to address? When you come up, please announce your name and address. Thank you.
Gary Mitchell, 6944 Nickel Road. I have some concerns about the school legality. Is it going to be inspected by the fire department? Is the sewer system adequate to take care of 28 kids? I guess, and I think about the liabilities of the city. And so these are two of my concerns. And so I'd wonder if you guys would address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcy, if we want to clarify, that you do have a public hearing as part of the discussion for the school, so that's the appropriate time to discuss the school.
Okay, so now isn't the time?
Correct. We'll, we'll open up that portion. This is for any new business.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, then we will close open forum number one and move on to item number E on our agenda, which is a public hearing to consider the interim use one, or I, 2022-001 Home Occupation. And we will begin with the open public hearing. The applicant presentation will kick us off, so if you would like to come up and present, you are able to do so at this time.
So my name is Rachel Hodge and this is my partner, Jacob Longley.
My name is Jacob Longley.
He wants to say it himself. Sorry. We reside at 6716 Nickel Road. We moved to Breezy Point in 2018 to start Ashdown Forest School. It's a Scandinavian-inspired nature preschool program for children ages two through six held primarily outdoors. We have been licensed through Crow Wing County and the Department of Human Services as a Class C-3 group family childcare since June of 2019. Our program meets or exceeds all licensing requirements and we operate in compliance with the State of Minnesota rules. We have had consistent growth since opening, serving a total of 45 children and their families since then. Currently enrolled families, as well as those on our waitlist, exceeds 60 in total. We've also become leaders in the Minnesota Forest School movement and will soon begin offering professional guidance to aspiring forest school leaders from across the state, as well as teachers and administrators working towards incorporating nature-based learning in public schools. In June of 2021, we built a 27-foot yurt in the woods behind our home to be used as a licensed shelter, which has been inspected and approved by the City of Breezy Point, Fire Marshal Dan Beeson, DHS, and our county licenser, Michelle Taubes. A portion of our home also remains licensed as an emergency relocation area. In January of this year, Bladick, the Brainerd Lakes Area Economic Development Corporation, partnered with Crow Wing County to provide over $500,000 in grant funding to solve the childcare shortage in our area. Our school has been selected as a $100,000 recipient of this funding. We are here today requesting a home occupation interim use permit as recommended by Jerry Bonesak to allow a school expansion at our current site. This would include creating 10 additional childcare openings per day, building a second yurt of the same size and color scheme, and hiring three to four additional staff members. Along with our application, we've included a list of testimonials from community members advocating for this expansion. In anticipation of the concerns that may be shared tonight, and in an effort to preserve the best parts of our neighborhood, we have compiled a list of additional compromises we would like to have set in place should the permit be approved. With this, we hope to reassure you that our intentions are good, we value and appreciate all perspectives, and that any concerns about change are understood, but greatly outweighed by the benefits our school has brought and will continue to bring to local families. We're dedicating, dedicating our lives to helping children build kindness, empathy, and compassion, as well as a love and appreciation for nature. Given the opportunity, we could share endless resources backing up the importance of outdoor learning in early childhood. To accommodate concerns of increased traffic within our neighborhood, we will begin requiring that school families use the lakeside entrance during the 8:30 to 9:00 a.m. drop-off and 3:00 to 3:30 p.m. pickup window, limiting traffic in front of all homes located directly along Nickel Road. We are also in support of taking additional safety measures to ensure appropriate driving within our neighborhood, whether it be a speed limit reduction, speed limit enforcement, or restricting through traffic from the elementary school. In addition, we can find ways to stagger drop-off and pickup times to limit the amount of vehicles entering Nickel Road at one time. To address any safety concerns, we will be, we are willing to forego our use of the section of land across the street that we lovingly call the dirt slides, until we are able to use a portion of our funds to properly manicure and maintain all areas visible from Nickel Road. Lastly, we would like to limit our total number of students per day to 24, rather than the initial request for 28, committing to never exceeding that amount. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. All right, Jerry, now we have staff review.
The applicant is Rachel Hodge and Jacob Longley. The residence is located at 6716 Nickel Road. The parcel ID number is 101-81318. And the parcel that is being talked about this evening is approximately 5.25 acres. The zoning of the property is wooded residential at Section 153.036 of our zoning code. Rachel Hodge and Jacob Longley are making application for an interim use permit for home occupation to expand Ashdown Forest School at 6716 Nickel Road. Definition of a home occupation is the use of a commercial nature conducted by an occupant of a dwelling entirely within the dwelling or accessory buildings, which is, which use is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential purposes. An interim use permit is basically the same as a conditional use permit, but with a specific time limit and for a specific piece of property. Again, Rachel and Jacob reside at 6716 Nickel Road. They're currently operating a licensed daycare facility called Ashdown Forest School. A licensed daycare facility serving 12 or fewer persons is allowed without a permit in a wooded residential district. Rachel and Jacob are seeking approval to expand the Ashdown Forest School to serve approximately 28, which was the number that we had heard until recently, the 24 that we just heard from the application, applicant. In order to expand the existing operation, an interim use permit for a home occupation would need to be approved by the Planning Commission acting as the Board of Adjustment. Again, this conditional, interim use is the same as a conditional use, only with a time Findings, the incident intended use meets the definition of a home occupation. Home occupation is permitted interim use in a WR zone. The use with conditions conform to the comp plan. The use is compatible with the existing neighborhood. The use would not be injurious to the public health, safety, welfare, decency, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, or prosperity. The use is consistent with 153.124 interim use and 153.119 conditional use. Published and mailed notice was given of the public hearing to be held this evening. Board of Adjustment Options. Determine that the proposed application is not an appropriate home occupation and deny the application. Determine that the proposed application is appropriate home occupation and approve the interim use permit with conditions. Potential conditions if the, the board were to choose to approve. Could be all activities be within the dwelling and accessory buildings and on the surrounding grounds. Interim use permit limited to a daycare facility serving a number of clients, specific number. The interim use permit would expire 12/31/2027. The hours of operation, again, I think we, we saw something different from the original application to what we heard this evening. And signs for facility shall not exceed six square feet and shall not be internally lit. Operation of the, operators of the facility to encourage patrons' usage of western leg of Nickel Road for ingress and egress to facility. Require an annual septic compliance. Limited number of employees and anything other that may or may not choose. I think it's important to, to state that this is, this application is for a specific use on a specific piece of property for a specified time. It is not a rezoning of the property. This is, this is for a specific use on a specific property for a specific amount of time.
Are there any questions from the commission?
I do have a question. So if you're going to increase the number of kids there, does that change your requirement for more help?
For staff?
More staff, yeah.
Yep.
So what would that be, I guess? What would be the?
Can you come up to the podium so that we can record that? Thank you.
The maximum number of increased staff that we would have would be three to four additional staff.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you. All right, then we're moving on to the portion for public input. So if you'd like to come to the podium, please identify yourself, your address, and then due to the number of people, we limit it to about three minutes. So, thank you.
My name is Karen Mitchell and I live at 6944 Nickel Road. And I'm sure Jake and Rachel do a fine job of educating the children at their Ashdown School. But since we are a residential area, I would prefer the school would not be expanded. I believe most of the homeowners in our area bought their property and our location because it's been such a quiet neighborhood with low traffic and has just a country feel to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Mike Monahan. We live at 30682 Nickelwood Circle. And I first like to recognize that Jake and Rachel have been a great addition to our neighborhood, great people. The program that they've developed is making a big difference on the kids. However, for, for us, you know, we bought this property to have some elbow room, the peace and quiet. I travel for a living, I come home. It's, it's so nice to come home to limited traffic, limited people, things like that. I guess, regretfully, our position is that we would prefer that it did not go through. But having said that, we'd still like to support them as the, at the levels that it's at, because we do believe it's a great program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Vicki Palmer and I live at 30595 Nickelwood Circle. I have a couple of questions, and one of them has to do with the classification. I know you're not changing the zoning, but why is it called daycare or a school versus a business? Because it is a business, right? It does collect money, it does provide a service, but it is a business, right? Okay, and then one of my other main concerns is the safety. That road is a small road, it's not a very wide road. I and my family and Monahans, a lot of them have to use that road to gain access to County Road 11. There are no turnoff lanes, there are no go-around lanes, and it's very dangerous. I know, I've only lived there for a little over a year, and many times I've been afraid of being tail-ended coming from the west side, from Pequot. And if you have to turn off coming from Breezy on the other end of it, it's also very dangerous. There's no turnaround or anything. And I have been on Nickel Road when the traffic is picked up for parents picking up and dropping their kids off. And it is quite an increase, as it is with the current numbers. And I worry about the safety of us in the neighborhood, but I also worry about the safety of everybody entering and exiting to and from County Road 11. I think it's a very dangerous spot, and there's no place to go on either entrance. It's down the hill through the guardrails. So that concerns me. And again, I reiterate that I think then we live in a residential area, you know, a daycare is still a business, it's still a money-making operation. And I applaud what they're doing too. I'm a teacher, I'm a retired teacher. I applaud any effort for students, but the bottom line is, is that we are residents and that's kind of a business. I support it as it is, but not for growth.
Thank you.
Kyle Lewis, 13600 Nokasippi River Road, Brainerd. My wife Jessie and I have been attending Ashdown Forest School for going on three years, and we can speak intelligently to the positive impact that they have on our, on our daughter, and will continue using them for our upcoming twins. We will say that, you know, any not-in-my-backyard kind of approach, I think their services far outweigh that. So we're in support of it. Please approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ren Norgard and I live at 20160 County Road 36 in Crosby. I am a teacher at Ashdown Forest School and I'm in support of this expansion. I've been a teacher for four years, and the first thing I can tell you is that children love to play in the mud. If you ask any child where they'd rather be, if it's in a traditional classroom or outside in the natural world, I bet most of them are going to say in the natural world. And without a doubt in my mind, I know that that's where most children need to be. No child actually learns how to play, it's just something innate that comes naturally to them. And that's the beautiful thing about nature-based education programs, is that children are allowed the freedom to get back into nature and just simply play. A nature-based education allows children to build a true sense of self-identity, and it forces them to problem-solve and collaborate in groups. Playing outside increases a child's creativity and re-engages their awe and wonder for learning. And I could stand up here all night and tell you personal stories of how I've seen children our community, community dramatically changed by like this type of education, but it's mostly just truth in the testimonials that you guys have before you. So I don't need to speak to that. But as an educator, living through the last two years of the pandemic was one of the hardest things that I've ever done. I left my job at a traditional school setting to come and work for Jake and Rachel. I took that risk because I believe in what they're doing and the mission and the positive outcome that it has for our community. Ashdown Forest School and Jake and Rachel have a great desire to see children transformed, and the endless benefits of this nature-based edu- education program greatly outweigh any of the concerns our neighbors have with traffic or, you know, environmental impacts, because we are getting children back into nature. This program is a gem in our community, and Jake and Rachel deserve the right to get this permit to expand because our children deserve better. They've been through a lot these past two years, and they deserve this program. Children don't just love to play in the mud, they really do need it. So we thank you for your ti- for your time and consideration for this permit for us.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deanne Tradier. We reside at 30648 Nickelwood Circle, Breezy Point. And we want to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak on the proposed expansion of Ashdown Forest School. My husband Pat and I have owned property on Nickelwood Circle since 2004. We built our house in 2005 and have since purchased two additional adjoining lots in the neighborhood. We chose this property in part because of the wooded residential zoning, which provided larger tracts of land, privacy and quiet in the woods, yet was close to schools, town, and area lakes and trails, and was part of a residential neighborhood. We enjoy walking, snowshoeing, and skiing in the woods. While we support the existing nature preschool program, we are here tonight opposing the interim request by Jake and Rachel for the expansion of the forest preschool. While the ordinance does read that a licensed daycare facility serving 12 or fewer persons is allowed, we do not see the expansion of the preschool to fit within the definition of low density, nor is it residential. We understand home occupation to run a family, to run, to allow a family to run low-impact business from their residence. The city ordinance states the number of employees shall be limited to family members living on this premise only. That clearly will not be the case here. We feel this application would transition the preschool from a residential home used to one which requires a more commercial setting. We have concerns about the additional traffic that this would create on the road that was not designated for large amounts of cars. Additional parking areas for increased staff has also not been addressed. We would question the environmental impact that the additional traffic could have on Rice Lake and Lowell Wildlife Management Area, which is currently enjoyed by walkers, bird watchers, wild racers, duck hunters in the fall, and occasionally kayakers and canoeers, especially if all traffic is directed to the west and along Rice Lake, as indicated in the potential findings. We feel it is unfortunate that this discussion didn't take place before or during the application process for the grant, and that it wasn't determined before the grant was awarded whether or not a larger preschool would even be feasible at the current site. Again, we are concerned about the proposed size of the school and the traffic impact on our truly residential neighborhood. We feel it is, is a great program as it is, but the expansion being proposed does not fit the zoning nor the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Matthew Larson. I am a resident of Breezy Point at 9035 Humming Bear Lane. I've been a resident here with my wife since 2012. I am currently a pharmacist at Guidepoint Pharmacy. I'm normally in the Crosby location, but you can see me monthly or a few times a month at the Breezy Point location. And my wife and I are now raising our two daughters, aged three and five here, who are currently students with Jake, Rachel, and Ren at the Ashdown Forest School. We moved to this area not knowing much about it, and we picked Breezy Point specifically because of the Pequot Lake School District, and we really see Ashdown as another extension of that and providing excellent education to our children. And now, Ashdown Forest School, with its forest school model, is teaching our kids to be independent, resilient, and creative little explorers, all while fostering a love of nature and teaching our kids to be kind human beings. The opportunity to expand the school should not be missed. It will help separate Breezy Point from other communities in this county and Minnesota as a whole. It will put this community at the forefront of nature-based education that is growing throughout this country. As the previous president of the Kynon Lakes Chamber of Commerce, I have seen how one business or idea can change the trajectory of a community. I see Ashdown Forest School as another way for Breezy Point to attract young families to this area, keep them here, and to spend their dollars in this community. I understand the concern of the residents, and I do believe that through mediation and hard work, we can make it work, and I do, I totally understand where you guys are coming from. In fact, I am so passionate about this, I have made the decision to leave my full-time work as a pharmacist and become a teacher at the Ashdown Forest School this fall, because I think that it is just a wonderful opportunity, and I want to spend more time with my children, and I know that this whole program is just incredible and it's going to take off. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Matt Postier, 20134 Rabbit Court, Crosby. My oldest son Lars is one of the students at Ashdown currently. I have two others behind him. He is five currently and would next year need to go on to another school. We drive every year, or every day from Crosby, which is quite, quite a haul. We bring money into your community gladly, and we'll do it gladly with the other two. Again, I do understand the concern from the neighbors. We live in the middle of nowhere in Crosby, and it's weird when people are driving down my road, and I get that. But I would, I would hope that we can come to some sort of agreement where it works out for the neighbors, whether coming in from the west, just to kind of avoid being in front of houses. I traditionally would come in from the east. This morning I came in from the west, and we do like, it's, it's very doable as a parent to just make that loop around. It's not super inconvenient for us, and we do avoid all the traffic in front of their houses. But I do, if you guys could go ahead and make this happen, it'd be great to keep my kids going through this program, keep dollars flowing to the community, and it makes a huge impact on how my, my kids come home at the end of the day happy. I was a kid that hated school growing up because it was inside, and that's how my kids are, and they come home just joyous on what they learned throughout the day. And then just being able to like take them out in the woods and they can identify what's going on is pretty rare to see in kids these days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eileen Springer, 6817 Nickel Road. And I also oppose this because of the traffic. We are, we're a quiet neighborhood. So, but, I mean, I like Rachel and, and Jake, but it just doesn't seem proper in our area. And the thing of it is, if they get, they get, this goes through, what does it keep from other people building businesses in our area? Think of that too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm going to have a hard time, actually. I didn't think this was going to be that hard, but I'm a parent. My name is Alyssa Marsh, 26305 Edna Lake Road in Nisswa. And I'm sorry. And I'm sorry, like I seriously did not think this was going to be that. My son is going to be graduating from the Ashdown program, so I don't really need to be here, but I have to be here because what they have provided us. We moved here just four years ago. I actually quit my job because I couldn't find childcare that I felt was good enough for my children and the love that Jake and Rachel have shown us, my children, this community, their neighborhood. I think any of us as parents would be willing to snowshoe to get our kids if it means it would be less traffic because this has been so important to us. I wrote something. The biggest thing are the kids. The kids that go there, they are happy. They're exposed to a very healthy environment. They appreciate and are asked to be stewards of the community and that 100% has been what they have given us. And I just want to say thank you for anything else to you too.
Thank you.
Good evening. Joe Doty, 30718 Rice Creek Drive. I am an adjoining landowner.
Just a second. If we could just make sure that all comments are directed to the board because they're the ones that this is for. You don't want to return comments because it can sometimes get inappropriate. So please direct all comments just to the board.
Sure. Again, I'm an adjoining landowner, been there 23 years. I've actually had some activity in the neighborhood of making it, of developing it over the years. I've been involved in some land splits over there, so I know all about progress and things moving forward and things progressing and I'm all for that. And I understand Jake and Rachel, I have some very passionate people here that go to their school and I get that. I know they do a great job down there because my daughter helped them last summer and she came home happy and she enjoyed what was going on down there. But as a landowner, I cannot support it. The increased traffic is just not acceptable. Number one, I guess I've got quite a few things I want to go through, but number one, on your list of potential conditions for approval, number six, operators of the facility will encourage patrons to use the western leg of Nickel Road for ingress and egress to the facility, I think is absolutely unacceptable. I am the only house on the western leg of Nickel Road. So what they're saying is they're going to direct all this additional traffic from that school past my house. I don't go for that. I think that is unacceptable and unrealistic. As we get into some of your ordinances here, as I was reading today and learning about what's going on, again, for what they have going on at the moment, I think they're doing a great job. They have passionate people that go there, they're doing a wonderful thing, but it doesn't exactly meet your ordinance as you have it stated. And I'm not quite sure how you think we're going to expand this and fit it within your ordinance. Apparently, we can do a licensed daycare facility serving 12 or fewer persons in the wooded residential zoning classification. We're currently over 12, so we're at 14 and now we want to take that to 24. So we're going to double what is already barely fitting within your classification. I don't think that's correct. As far as your enrollment goes, I mean, there was some talk of 55 enrolled students and waiting to be served students. That's quite a bit more than 28. I mean, how do we know how many kids are coming every day? We don't know that. As far as the home occupation, that is one of your items listed here on your, I've got to find the right page here. The Board of Adjustment Options, determine that the proposed application is not an appropriate home occupation and deny application. A home occupation as defined by your ordinance, letter D, number of employees shall be limited by the interim use permit and shall be limited to family members living on the premises only. We currently already have one employee, which again, doesn't meet the designation of home occupation. This is a small business. I'm a small business person. I would love to run my small business out of my house, it would save me a lot of money, but I cannot do that because my business is not zoned properly for that area. I completely, again, agree with what they've got going on, I support what's happening there, but the expansion, I just respectfully ask that you deny the expansion. This is a residential neighborhood, it is a quiet residential neighborhood, it's been a quiet residential neighborhood for many, many years and this traffic is getting out of control on that road. It is a narrow road with no shoulders and there's a lot of walking down by the wetland area. And at this point, I just don't see how, based on your own ordinances, that you can approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that the reason we've served 45 families is because we have families who are part-time, they don't attend every single day. And we also have summer camp programs that are the same exact model as our school year program, but we have families that come for a month at a time. So we're serving more children throughout the year than we are just by looking at how many kids are there that day. And we also do have enough parking on-site for our staff and that's not an issue.
For the record, can you restate your name again?
Rachel Hodge, yes. 6716 Nickel Road. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Erin Grundy, 4752 Noka Trail, Brainerd, Minnesota. My son goes to forest school. When he was born, I was like, what are we going to do with him for school? Where are we going to put him? And I had learned about forest school and I was like, that's never going to happen in our area, like that's never going to happen. And then lo and behold, here it is. An amazing opportunity for kids who maybe wouldn't do well in a traditional setting, number one. But number two, a few years ago, I was in Rachel and Jake's position. I'm a business owner up in Walker, Minnesota. I bought a piece of property, I was building an office space and I had to come to a meeting like this and I, it never even occurred to me that people would be opposed to it, never. Because the idea I had in my head wasn't what people thought that it was going to be. So I did what's going on here. The business, everything was approved, the business is existing where it is in a residential area and everybody that opposed it, now that it's been there for three years, they have apologized because we accommodated everybody's request, made everybody happy and appeased it and it's been an asset to the community and people are actually patrons of it now. So the thing is, is we all have like a, you know, we look at things from a selfish point of view, how's this going to affect me? How is this going to affect me? But what we don't see is the overall vision and how things can be worked out to make everybody happy. Because they can, they can be. I experienced it in a small town of Walker, Minnesota, 900 people, small community, small neighborhood and it works and like I said, and I'm very grateful to the community for that and to the neighborhood. Because again, I had no idea that there was going to be strife caused by me doing that. So anyway, just talking from experience of being in the same position that everybody's happy, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just reintroduce yourself, please. Vicki Palmer, 30595 Nickelwood Circle. Since I'm kind of new to the neighborhood, I'm wondering how much of this was known to everybody in the whole community, our community, our neighborhood, sorry, I turned. I just heard it was a daycare. I mean, I'm not familiar with everything that's going on there, you know, whether it was licensed, whether it had a permit or what kind of thing it was. And I'm just wondering if the whole neighborhood is aware of how it was established and things like that. So maybe those are some questions that I can have answered at a later date. Again, I applaud what they're doing. I don't think we should assume that other daycare facilities and preschool facilities are not doing some of the same things. There are other places that are in the woods and things like that and they do take kids outside. Again, I'm a teacher, I love kids, I'll do anything for them, but I didn't choose to retire next to something that's going to get bigger and change my neighborhood. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Hodge. I live at 214 Fourth Avenue Southeast in St. Cloud. I would just like to bring some practicality to this, a lot of it's emotional, but a lot of communities are struggling for daycare, childcare and you have a wonderful program that wants to be very considerate of their community, their neighbors and expand and bring what they have to more children. I think that it's, there's value in considering that we need those services and can find a compromise. Thanks.
Thank you.
Jacob Longley, 6716 Nickel Road. I guess I just wanted to come up and address some concerns and issues about how we're operating currently as well. And I just would like to say that everything that we have done and that we are doing, we have run through DHS, Crow Wing County, our licenser, Michelle Tauges. And our building requirement has been run through the city as well as licensing, as well as our fire marshal. So if there are any questions about whether or not we are operating legitimately, I would just like to put those to rest and say that we have taken every measure to make sure that we are doing this in a legitimate way. And we are falling under the requirements of a family daycare, childcare. And I just don't see how operating outside can change any of that. And we are asking to expand and I think that that expansion would fall under an interim use permit. Whether or not you approve it, you know, I guess all I can do is cross my fingers at this point, but I just appreciate you hearing us out and I appreciate everyone for coming, really, because I mean, how often do you get a full house in here? Is this maybe a first-timer? I don't know. I'm sure there's some things, I know we have something about pods coming up after this, I don't know how many people are here for that, but yeah, just thank you for hearing us out. And thank you, everybody, for being here.
Hello, I'm Amanda DeYoung, 30422 North Lakeview Street, right over there, across the way. I have four kids in three different schools. Shout out to our teachers, we have wonderful schools here. It was a big reason why we moved to the area. It's hard not to look at the neighborhood folk, but I wanted to just, first of all, thank them for sharing, we call it the heavenly hood because it really is a beautiful piece of land. And then it sounds like there, I wasn't aware of some of the concerns, so I guess just to maybe apologize on behalf of all of the parent life driving. And so just to really acknowledge and understand and maybe regroup here and want to team up with that. I love that there's a plan in place. So I have two boys that have attended forest school and not going to lie, I was skeptical at first. Really just had that mold of what a classroom was and what was supposed to happen, but the more time they spent in the forest, the more they bloomed. I, my son Luke, you know, he's our wild card. And so just to explain a little bit, you know, I was starting to, there's a time and a place for medication and therapy, but he didn't need that, he needed exploration. So obviously I have some emotional drive there, right? But just some of the more specific things that both boys have brought from that place is adaptability. We need adaptable kids nowadays. Amen. I mean, hello, things are changing. Appreciation. I can tell a significant difference in their gratitude for the simplest things. Since when are rocks and blocks enough? They're no longer addicted to their iPad. I mean, if we really want to study physiological psychology right now and what's happening with, so I could go on and on, but Rachel, Jake and of course, our beautiful Ren, a couple of things, as we consider the choice, they're resourceful, they don't waste anything. Time, food, money, experience, they're not the type of, I could see where this could be a concern, I'm really trying to understand, but they're not like go big or go home people. You know, they're not flashy or shiny, they're very nurturing to absolutely every living thing, person, plant around them. I know how they roll and they're preserving the beauty and blessing of what this neighborhood has to offer. They're real, Rachel, Jake and I, we have different views on some major things, but Jake and Rachel don't shy away from seeking to understand and finding mutual ground. So if you're going to be partnering with people to try something new, they're the ones. And finally, they're called. Their gift is undeniable. I call them the kid whisperers, I really do. And my recommendation would be to make a little more, a little more room for more kids to come and grow, which will ultimately bear much fruit for the community, which Alyssa already said, she used the word stewards of the community. So call it a school, call it a daycare, call it a business, I don't care what you call it, what are they producing? Because those little people are going to be producing more and more. And so, so grateful, thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
John McGee, 6884 Nickel Road, Breezy Point. I've spoken to this group one other time and probably went on too long, I'm going to be very short. I'm going to try, I'm not very good at it, but I'm going to go short. I appreciate everyone here tonight, parents and neighbors. I said when I was before you, some weeks ago, that we have an extraordinary neighborhood and these kinds of, these kinds of conversations are painful because we want to protect and retain our wonderful neighborhood and our relationships are terribly important and I wouldn't want to be in your spot tonight because it's a tough call, it's a very tough call. A couple of things I want to say though, is that my wife and I love our neighborhood and our neighborhood loves us, I think. And we're going to do everything we can to have that relationship continue. We live at the main intersection of Nickel Woods. I mean, Nickelwood Circle and Nickel Road cross right at our driveway. So I think we probably see as much or more traffic than anyone going north, south, east, west or up the, up Nickel Circle. We also, to whatever extent that invades our privacy, it hasn't been that much of a problem to date that we would say so. But the other thing that invades our privacy, and we do it because we want to, is that we have kids, both Deanne's kids from Eagleview and also Ashdown Forest kids, that are all over the back of our property, up into the woods and up into the fields and so we've got, we're sacrificing a little bit already because my wife and I really love the wildlife, we love where we are and, you know, to see a fox or a, Eileen said she saw, what was it, Eileen, a badger or what did you, not a badger, down by the, anyway, we celebrate the black bear showing up or whatever and I think all the neighbors do, it's a beautiful thing for that. And to whatever extent kids are in the woods, you're probably sacrificing some of that and I hate to think that the owl's not going to be there anymore because the kids make noise and... So we're making some sacrifices and I think we'll probably make more sacrifices if Jake and Rachel are allowed to expand. But I want to be very clear that I would be violently, not violently, I'd be very opposed to any other business that might decide that they were going to locate on Nickel Road. I would only make room in my, in our little environment, I would only find room for something as extraordinary as the Ashdown Forest School. I think they are world-class and they are something for Breezy Point to be proud of. And I think if you approve the, if you approve the, the change in their, the adjustment in their zoning, I know that they will do everything they can to knit the, whatever damage is done by neighbors not getting everything that they wanted to get out of the deal, I know that they're going to do everything I can to have it, have it work out. One specific thing that I would like to influence the commission about, okay, one last thing, is to take off, perhaps take off the table, that condition where maybe all the traffic would go one way, because I don't think it's entirely fair to, to the Doty household because they would have all the traffic. I think we could share that, but I know that we could figure it out if you decide to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Nick Norgard. I live at 20160 County Road 36 in Crosby, Minnesota. I just wanted to help point out some of the concerns with traffic going on in the area. Just saying that it is an expansion. It's not doubling from, because they currently have 14 kids at a time. It's not doubling up to 28. They moved that number back in order to help accommodate the concerns of the neighbors. Also, just to point out the desire of the applicants, Jake and Rachel, to consider the, the concerns that the neighbors have, I think is very commendable and should definitely be considered. Also, the fact that they have part-time families, like Rachel came and mentioned earlier, with part-time families that only come some days of the week and filling in those spots with others. What comes out to serving many more families by expanding to 10 more students per, per day is still only 10 cars per day added in traffic, but many more families per day that are able to be served that can find this great childcare and also come to the community. But that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Mitchell, 6944 Nickel Road. I've got a question. They're licensed for 12, they're at 14. If they're licensed for 28, what's, who's going to know if they have 30 or 31? How are you going to keep track of that? Basically, if you give them that permission, you're responsible for that. And I, they are good people. And I don't have, the 14 they have now have not been a problem. But nobody kept track of it. It was 12, now it's 14. So we need to have somebody keep track of that. And it certainly isn't our job as neighbors to go over and count those kids. But it's somebody's job and it's up to you to decide how to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel Hodge, 6716 Nickel Road. Oh, so we currently have 14 students per day. When we became licensed, we only were communicating with Crow Wing County because that's all that's required when you become a licensed childcare center. In Crow Wing County, you were allowed 14 children per day. We apologize for that. We didn't know that the city only allowed 12 per day, so that's on us. We know that we won't go beyond the required capacity because we have annual inspections unannounced by licensors. We are kept in check by the Department of Human Services. We can't just go off and do whatever we'd like to. We are, we have parameters that we need to follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time for the old guy to speak. Jim Nickel, I've got 15 acres right alongside of a school. I probably date back a little history to the 1890s when my grandpa and grandma first homesteaded. And we, you know, they probably were concerned about the horse carts that was going up and down the road at that time. Later, Captain Billy Fawcett opened up the road that went right past our place down Nickel Road. And the traffic was 10 times more than what we're talking about right now that it'll be. It wasn't too awfully long ago, probably 10 years ago or so, we're talking about Doty's expansion on Nickel Road and what the traffic would be like with the expansion. I hear a lot of these people talking tonight. They got their little, little section of quiet land and everything else. But we approved them on Nickel Road to use it and everything else. So my opinion is this is a good thing and a good positive thing. And I have no kids that are going there. I'm too old for that. But still, I'm in favor of what they're attempting to do.
Thank you.
Adam Anderson, 4752 Noka Trail. I too had experienced same or similar to what Erin had mentioned about establishing a business within a residential area. We had major opposition because ultimately fear, anger, these kinds of emotions. 100% understandable, but same type of experience. After we had a chance to show people how and what we were doing to prove to them, they've since come and appreciated and say it's a major asset to the community. This school is. Rather than focusing on the negative fear sides or the concerns on some of these things, traffic was a major issue with my business as well. Those things never really happened. And let's be part of positive change for the community, which I think is being represented here and supported by the community at large, which has helped to bring some of these people out of their homes and become part of the community because of this school. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Colleen Sandin, 6365 Palmer Drive, Ideal Township. One thing I will say, I can completely understand with the neighbors, a little apprehensive about change. We all live in this area because we enjoy the wildlife, we enjoy the woods. I bought my property for the same reasons, but I'm experiencing change around me right now and embracing it and seeing the changes in the community. But one thing I want to point out is Ashdown Forest School, we're calling it a preschool, we're calling it a daycare, we're calling it a business, but it's really a community. And if you ask any of the parents here, Rachel and Jake have brought all of us together and have brought our children together. Not going to touch on two years of COVID and what our kids have been through. I have a daughter in first grade at Eagleview. My daughter will be graduating from Ashdown. And Jake and Rachel are teachers who are showing up to my kids' ice skating events at Breezy Point. I have never had a teacher come to my children's out-of-school activities before. The other thing that I wanted to point out is when I was looking for a preschool for my child, I could only get her in Eagleview two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. She's pre-K. So a child only having educational availability two days a week prior to entering kindergarten is unacceptable. And that comes to the concern of why they got the grant was that there is a lack of preschool and pre-K options for children in this area. And other places that I did tour were nowhere near the standard of Ashdown. So at that point, I would just make the point that allowing more children to attend this school will give parents more opportunity to be a part of the community and give their children a great experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Larson of 9035 Humming, Berlin and Breezy. I forgot to mention, too, that I tried to enroll my children at Pequot and they were also full and we were waitlisted. I was going to drive my daughter to Crosby, who had openings, but it opened here in Breezy Point. And yeah, childcare is almost impossible to find in this area. So expanding that will greatly help some other families. Thank you.
Alyssa Marsh, 26305 Edna Lake Road. And this, I also want to tell you that I didn't, did not have childcare opportunities. That is why I did have to quit my job. The childcare opportunity was only two days a week from 9 to 11, which is not sustainable for a full-time job. So when we found Ashdown, not only did they provide us with additional support, but they also provided me to be able to launch my own business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda DeYoung, 30422 North Lakeview Street. I echo that. They were my childcare option and thanks to this option, then, I was really, really stressed out. But thanks to this Ashdown option, I was able to then get a job in Pequot Lakes at the gym. Whoop, whoop. Go Senior Fitness. And also at the Log Church, leading worship. So we were going to have to just, I would have loved being home with them, but I'm very thankful to be able to contribute into the community.
Thank you. And at this time, we're going to close the open forum. Is there any questions here before we move on?
Actually, we need to take a two-minute timeout for the machine to reset. So there won't be any discussion during that two minutes. Deb needs to shut down everything. And then just stay where you're at. Kelly, Deb, if you can turn off.
Deb, you can go ahead and turn off and restart. Thank you.